Seven oh one, I'll call the meeting to order. Regular meeting, the Mount Holly Planning Commission, Wednesday, September twentieth. First item on the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? I'd like to propose one, that we move public comments up to position... Let's do it right after reports. How does that sound? Okay with everybody else? Get you out of here earlier if you want to be? Okay, no disagreements? It would be change in the agenda. Agenda is approved. I have two sets of minutes distributed, one for the special meeting and one for the last regular meeting, as everyone had a chance to review them. Okay, any changes, additions, corrections?
One for me.
Any motions?
I wanted the regular one because I wasn't there, so... Oh, that was August sixteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes, as distributed. Seconded by Andrew. All in favor?
Yep.
I, all opposed. None. Minutes are approved, thank you. Faith, do you have a report? I think you might have one from last time too, or... Can't remember if we had something that was left from last time.
The thing that was left was the BCR form, which we have as new business.
Okay.
Okay, on BCRs, I have received one from Jalen Anderson for replacement by a shed, a twenty by twenty-four foot shed on Route one fifty-five, thirty-four ninety-two, one fifty-five. I have received a BCR from Tyler Seegerdner on Jack Frost Lane for construction of a new house, residence. He doesn't give indications of the size of the number of bedrooms, but this is a thirty by fifty-four foot house. It... The BCR refers to the wastewater permit issued initially to Andy Ballarlock under the previous ownership before the subdivision. I know that there were some questions earlier regarding the wastewater permit and the number of buildings allowed. And I also found out today that there is another issue that the listeners are looking into regarding whether or not one of the buildings already constructed also contains a residence, as opposed to just a storage space. So I don't know if we want to go into detail on that now, or if we want to...
Because, wasn't that three subdivisions?
Three lot subdivision?
Yeah, that had three building sites.
Well, there is some confusion, I think.
On which lot it's gonna be on?
Well, it's a three lot subdivision.
Yeah.
And yet, the maps with the wastewater permit actually show four lots, and the wastewater permit suggests that there are four lots. This did come up as a subject of discussion during the construction of the first building on that plot.
You had to say some comments on that?
Yes.
So there may be other, I mean, it's not directly related to this. This seems to be like it's on a different lot, but I can't be sure, we're looking at the application. But one of the concerns of the adjoining landowners, not terribly different from some of the issues here tonight, was that the owner of the property, Mr. Seegerdner, I believe his name is, Walter, I think, was the owner of one of the lots. How would you put it? Asserted that he would not be using it for any commercial purposes, and I think there's still some question about that. What is your assessment of which lot it's on? Do you think...
I, having only just seen this today, I have not had a chance to clarify. I have also heard anecdotally that the construction may have already started.
Wouldn't they be different parcel numbers compared to the ones that were already built? Correct, or... Was it subdivided? So we could look at the ones that we already received from them?
Ordinarily, it would have, I think, a sub number.
Yeah, a different parcel number for each lot.
But it is very confusing and sort of prone to all kinds of misinterpretation that the approved lot division plots are not in sync with the wastewater permit site plans. And I mean, that's caused all kinds of problems with this one, but... So what do you recommend for looking forward here?
Well, firstly, I think I would need to go and have a look and work out where it is in relation to either the three or the four lots. And secondly, seek further information from Mr. Seegerdner. And if need be, consult with the state wastewater engineer, Chris Trombo.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, those are the BCRs I've received. I have noted at least one construction which has started, and I haven't received a BCR, so I will follow up with the owner of that land. Wastewater permits, we have received the copy of the wastewater permit issued for the Belmont General Store, which allows for the general store itself with takeout deli, no public bathroom, and four chairs for public use, which is similar to how it was previously. It also allows for the post office, a two-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment, which is also how it was previously. There is an addition, which is that under certain fairly tight conditions, cider production, fermentation only with off-site disposal of all waste will be permitted at the store. This has been approved by Chris Trombo, the Rattland Regional Office. There is a fairly strict schedule of inspections, which would need to be conformed with to fulfill the requirements of the waste disposal off-site.
Any comments, questions?
So it was the store, four chairs, and deli. What else?
General Store with takeout deli.
Okay.
No public bathroom.
Thank you.
Four chairs of public use. Cider production, fermentation only with off-site disposal.
Thank you.
The disposal is basically in IBC totes, which then need to be taken elsewhere after washing the cider fermentation lots.
But there's no other reconfiguration of the floors for the apartment or anything?
No, this appears to be the same as the previous configuration.
Yeah.
In this, well, it's the same in this, that it's the same number of bedrooms as the previous configuration, but it's split into two, acknowledging that we are two apartments.
Same number of bedrooms as the permit, the previous permit?
Yes.
But not necessarily
Permit, yes.
What was in existence up until recently?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And one other item is that there has been some correspondence with a person who's interested in purchasing the plot of land for sale at twenty-three sixty-nine Route one fifty-five. This is heading north. It is... How can I describe it? It is just beyond Barlow Road, I think.
North of Barlow Road?
I think so. It is, but it is in a, part of the plot is in a flood hazard area. And so she initially contacted me about the potential for construction there. I did advise her of the town's bylaw. I also recommended that she speak to Carl Medash, which she has done, who's confirmed that there would be certain restrictions on where construction would be allowed. She has also been in touch with Zabata Courage, who's the district wetlands ecologist, because there are also some wetland restrictions.
That's the parcel that has the for-sale sign right at the end of the garden ground?
Yes.
It's actually before Barlow Road, after Beaver Meadow Brook Road?
Yeah.
Right on the right-hand side if you're heading north.
There's a small house on the road, and then another house way back in the meadow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then right at the end of the garden ground, there's the for-sale sign. It's that little parcel, it's a quarter lot, or...
Yeah. It's actually quite...
No, it's this size.
Right next door to... near this place.
Alright.
So she's just asking what the restrictions would be before she buys them?
Yes.
Considering what they have to buy?
Yeah.
Okay.
But just to have it on our radar in case there is some construction, that it would be subject to both flood hazard, river corridor, and wetland restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Is that all?
That's all.
Alright, so I think we'll move to the public comments. We have one on the agenda, a noticed agenda. There may be others, but we'll start with Maria Fortier.
Well, why don't you stand up?
You may, if you want to.
Well, we were here last time during the special meeting, and we brought up the subject of the pavilion that is Anteli Land that borders our, that is right across from our land. Except that, you know, we have the road in between. Anyway. And at the time, there was gonna be a fundraiser, which is one of the reasons why we were really concerned about it, given the fact that we thought that the pavilion would be used for weddings for the family, for the Tilly family, as we were told. And then the concert, the fundraiser rather, was planned for the seventeenth. The fundraiser was not, didn't take place there, it took place in the green. And however, that still remains a huge concern, not just for us, but for most of the neighbors that are in the area, that live in the area. We don't really know where this is going. We don't know what other plans Alyssa and the Anteli have, which are the owners of the land. And we would like to put it out to the board that we are extremely concerned about, that this has not turned into a business venture, where we have concerts or fundraisers or have you. I have a statement that I would like to read if I may. It was actually, we had a meeting amongst some of the folks that are concerned and that live in the area about the future planning and the future plans for this particular venue. And aside from the pavilion, there's other issues that relate to the Crowley fields and the Crowley, you know, the fields that are adjacent to the pavilion area. So this was actually prepared by one of the members that is not here today, but with obviously all the issues that we identified as important issues at the time, it was put into a comment, and I'd like to read it. "We have no idea how the mountain side might develop, since no work has been shared with the community. Surely, we would not want to see the lovely mountainside develop into an extended venue with weekly weddings and noisy evening concerts. We have concerns about increased traffic. Hellville Road sustained considerable damage during the recent flood. More traffic and a shift in land use would put more strain on the road, especially if campers are coming in for weekends. And this has to do with a hip camp that we have seen on the website. We have serious concerns about noise increase. Already, one camper at the hip camp on the Crowley farm complained about the noise made from residents using ATVs. If concerts are scheduled at the pavilion, noise will drift down through the valley. We do not favor noise coming from the hillside, nor the noise caused by weakened people traveling on the Hellville Road. We also have concerns about the meadow being used for vehicles driving above disturbing the land. During the recent flood, we saw water like a river flowing into the pond by the cheese factory. The pond overflowed and caused serious road damage. Another few hours of rain on the water would have crashed the road. We are among the members on the Hellville Road who treasure the beauty of silence in Mount Holly. It is one of the treasures of our town. We would like to be informed by the Tilly family as a neighborhood approach regarding future plans for the development of the Crowley lands."
Thank you. Do you happen to have a copy of that you can share with us?
I do. I can, we can make a copy, if you... I just add a little something there.
You didn't get all that?
I was trying to read slow, babe, I'm sorry.
Any thoughts, comments from the board before I ask the audience? No, I have, is there any... Is there any responses or other comments related to that from the audience? It seems to me there is at least one potentially actionable item there. Seems like a fairly reasonable request to be informed of any new developments or plans for development. I don't think the town has really any power to mandate that, but I think one, one party maybe potentially, or an interested party is present. Dave, would you, is that something you might be agreeable to? To share with the neighbors when you have plans for the law, or?
We have no problem with that.
It's a matter of courtesy, or?
Yeah, we have no problem with that.
Okay.
But I usually think the neighbors talk to each other rather than the town meetings, but that's okay.
I would also, I think that's also a fair rebuttal, is it would be nice if those conversations happened outside of these meetings, before they happen inside the meetings. I think, you know, just the way of neighbors talking to neighbors. So it sounds like, Dave, it's amenable to sharing those plans with you when, if they come up, and sharing them with you privately, or each of you, hopefully, before they rise to the level of something just ordinary to address. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I have one question. Where, are there any parameters that would decide when a venue goes from being a private family place to a commercial establishment? At what point does that occur? So, so I, we addressed the fundraiser with Faith, and Faith said that she was assured by Jamie this is a one-time deal, which is great. But so theoretically, could there be fifty-two one-time things per year? And that would be a valid argument that this is not a commercial venue. This is a private venue. These are all one-off fundraisers for different organizations. So is there any parameters that decide when a place would become, go from a private whatever picnic area, private family picnic area, to a commercial establishment? And how is that decided?
I think I was gonna say probably the same thing you are, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. So we do not have zoning in town.
Right.
So without zoning, we really don't have any parameters or any restrictions on whether it's a commercial building lot or not, as long as it meets state requirements. So the state would be the one who would determine the parameters, not that a commercial building lot.
So that leads me to ask, how does the state know? Because here we are, we're down here in Mount Holly. There's nobody from the state who's driving around looking for these things. So what are they relying on to find out? And how, how are they informed, and whose job is that, and what... Who should we be looking to to make that happen, if it needs to happen?
So James, excuse me? Nope, I'm sorry.
Well, just to clarify that there have been at least two inquiries with the state regarding whether or not activities trigger Act two fifty. And one was initiated by me after the Select Board discussion, I think, in May. The second was initiated by Craig Fortier, and that is currently being adjudicated by Quinn Mann, who is the regional coordinator for the Natural Resources Board. Equally, following your earlier submissions regarding the potential concert, I initiated conversations with the regional wastewater management that's responsible for that. I have asked the fire marshal for the town to provide guidance, but he's been on vacation. I think he's only back in the office today, and so I'm hoping to receive some information from him. But effectively, the only way the state knows is if either a member of the public, or I, or a member of the planning commission, or a member of the Select Board, or anyone else in the town asks for the state to give an opinion.
Yes, I'll just echo a couple things. So, Ruth, Andrew, that because we don't have zoning, we don't have any land use regulations. So we can't really say too much about how land is used outside of existing or ongoing jurisdictions. So if something was a condition of the subdivision, then we would have ongoing jurisdiction in that lot. But in this particular case, it doesn't appear like there were any conditions put on the subdivision. There could have been, but it doesn't appear there were. That doesn't mean the town is without authority in all matters. It means that the use of the land is typically not regulated at the local level. It's one of the reasons some people prefer to have zoning, is because the regulation is more local, locally controlled. We talk about local control, but in this case, the state has all of the control. The only way the town has the ability to influence that in any way is through a town plan, really. And there are a variety of mechanisms the state can use to say regulate, but weigh in on local land use, and that mostly is through Act two fifty, but not exclusively. I mean, there's certain types of building, building construction, permitting, the fire marshal, as Faith said, and lots of other things relating to wildlife and well and water stuff at that time. Now, the town does have ordinance writing authority, ability. That's not something this, this board would do. This would be something that the Select Board could consider. For example, there could be a noise ordinance in town that, I mean, it has come up many times in relation to like Tannerite or fireworks. But there are many towns that do have noise ordinances. That's one example of a sort of nuisance that could be regulated by the Select Board or by the town. But it doesn't specifically mention land use. It's not like, you know, you can farm here, you can camp here, that kind of thing. And just sort of echoing what Faith said, the town typically, in the case where there is no zoning, so in the case where there is zoning, the zoning officer or the administrative officer would be that front line, watching and somewhat of policing. But in a town without that, the best we have is the administrative officer getting information from the public, because we're not like going out looking for zoning infractions. It's mostly information transmitted to the state through Faith in this case. That said, they, at least in my experience, they typically only act on sort of verifiable information, or like actual knowledge. So hearsay, rumors, suspicions, that stuff doesn't influence them really at all. So when there are actual changes, that's something that could potentially, you were asking about triggers. So, like sort of bona fide changes, things that you're either imprint or on the land, or have some immediate effect. Those are things that would probably be more likely to be triggers. And what are all those things that can be triggers? Well, there's a very complicated matrix of them. You can look up the Act two fifty criterion, and there's a lot of them. Typically, so the big one is like the commercial industrial. That's the long line of answers.
Yeah, so my question is, if I go on, I forgot what website it is, but a state public website, public safety website, and then it has a chart of what you need a building permit for, state building permit. And so it lists all these different things, including a tent over so many square feet needs to be inspected. So if that's the case, how can we have a fundraiser up there in that building up there not be inspected by the state? And that's kind of what I was getting at when I was referring to, not, I'm not concerned with Jamie and the fundraiser, I'm concerned with the venue itself. And so this matrix I had from the state showed, you know, what commercial building, blah blah blah, but a public building needed to have certain inspections, fire marshal, whatever, electrical, all these different things. So if that is the case, what, how does that happen? So if I put up, it's a twelve hundred square foot tent, if I put up a twelve hundred square foot tent, who's making sure that gets inspected? Probably the tent company, if I had a guess, because they don't want to be on the hook for it. But nonetheless, on private buildings, who's doing that? So potentially, this venue, having the fundraiser there, which was a public event, would need these certain inspections. I don't have the chart in front of me, I had it last time, but I mean, one of them is a fire inspection. Yeah, there it is, right up there. I think something along those lines, yeah. It was a little bit different than that, but nonetheless, somewhat the same. So, who drives that? So, we got a venue, it was scheduled for a public event. Who makes sure that those things happen to keep the public safe? That's the reason for it, right? To keep the public safe.
Usually, a phone call triggers that.
A phone call, alright, yeah.
Either from the public, or a member of the public, or a town official.
Not official, or whatever.
Yeah, I think there's got to be, in my experience, there's two main paths it can take. One is where there's some local coordinates or regulating authority. So let's take, for example, this is maybe a little bit different from your case. Let's take the example of a short-term rental. A short-term rental is a public building. Many towns now have an ordinance regulating those.
Right.
That is a local law, and in many of them, there is a requirement that the fire permit be recorded in the land records. And so that's what drives it. So you have state requirements, but to make sure that there's, people are doing them.
Right.
There's a local law. There is no law in Mount Holly today like that, that I know of. There's no ordinance that requires filing or even obtaining a state construction permit, fire permit. There probably could be. You just have to decide what nuisance it's preventing, or why it's for public safety.
I mean, that's what it's about, it's public safety, obviously, right, but.
So that's, that's one path. The other path is, sort of like Bridget said, it's where you sort of drop dimes. And you call the fire marshal. So I think, you know, my experience with the state is that their ability to police is very limited. Their staffing is It's, they can only do so much of that checking up on stuff. They don't really drive around looking for things to, you know. So anything else on that? You have experience with fire stuff?
Well, you, you covered one area there, but it's only a minor problem here in Mount Holly. That's fireworks. Fireworks is required to have a permit. And that is you get through either the fire chief or the select board, because we don't have a constable.
Right.
If we had a constable and there's three sources you can get it from.
Do you have something? Okay, does that conclude comments on Maria's point? Did you have something on that?
There's another area that maybe of concern would be the health officer could be involved if they don't have enough facilities to handle the crowd. But that would, the health officer in theory could then shut down the event or limit the size of the event for a health concern.
That sounds plausible to me, yeah.
What about access to the, to the venue?
Access to the venue?
Okemobulane is considered, I thought it was a right of way. It's not supposed to be used for a commercial or business enterprise, so we were told.
Wait, sorry, which road?
Okemobulane.
Okay, which is a private road, correct?
So I guess, just curious about if indeed is the case.
Is there, there's a maintenance agreement for that private road?
I don't know.
Okay, well, that would probably be among the parties on the agreement, I imagine.
I was, we were informed, we were told by one of the parties that it's supposed to be a right of way. They're not, you know, they have to get permission from their person to get to the higher field where the pavilion is, so.
That's not true, but it's, it's a private, it's a private road.
Right.
And we all have right of way to use them. There is no restriction on our use.
So there's no restriction for commercial use?
There's no commercial use, but there's no restriction on our use.
So did you just say there's no commercial use on Okemobulane? Is that what you just said?
There is no commercial use on Okemobulane.
Is that, but is that in the part of the agreement?
Okay, anything else on this item? Anyone? From the board? Okay. Thank you all. Is there any other comments?
I have the information that you asked me about for post office entrance.
Okay, we can, we can do that. We have a little bit of time. How would you like to proceed?
Uh, I don't know. You had asked me the last meeting. So I got the survey. This is the exit. So the porch and the concrete pad are both on the store property. The corner is about a foot forward of the concrete. This entrance changed, this, the whole red is in, this is the entrance change here.
What about the other end of the concrete? It looks like, is it on the line or does it?
No, it's about a foot forward of the concrete.
The other end of it?
Oh, it's not, it hits the corner there, it's a foot forward there. But this change is inside the building itself. We're not going even as far as the porch. And, and again, the motivation for it is to kind of square off the building and give it better lobby and also give a grade so that there's no ramp. A lot of people that are getting older, it's easier to get in. And we can also put a better spot for the mailbox, because right now it blocks the door.
Is this the town line on this one?
Yeah, help, can you orient us between these two? Where are these points on here?
So these two bay windows are these two bay windows. You know, and this is
Thank you.
This is the corner that we're talking about in here.
Is that where the mail?
The mailbox is currently sitting.
The mail truck's back into the?
No, it's down here. They back in over here. The mail truck delivery guy has asked us to see if we could move the door to his mail thing, because he doesn't need a, there's no forklift loading or anything. He's just throwing mail bags. But they had a huge amount of trouble, I'm changing topics a little bit.
Yeah, so they're gonna put it over.
Well, I know, but we, so that's an encroachment already.
But we didn't make that.
No, it's existing.
Twenty years ago, and I think when Gail, yeah, and the post office built, the post office built that addition.
So what this is looking like is going to come out this way and then like square it out.
Square off there and then the entrance is right where that P is, well.
Okay, so it's gonna come out like that, like that.
But so this, this wall is the same as this.
It is. The, I guess, I don't remember all you guys and I don't know your names and stuff, but at that planning committee thing that was over at the library, you know, where the gentleman spoke and asked about maybe getting a stop sign and things like that, this frees up this corner. We wouldn't be opposed at all to have a stop sign. Oh, before I go there. The mail truck guy said that they have to actually bring a four-wheel truck here instead of their box truck. Because they can't get out of this hole in the winter time. He asked me, because they're just throwing bags in, if we could put the door on this side and you could just back, so if you look, you could just pull right over to the side of the road here and throw them in that door, rather than have it here. Because he's, they, they struggle with having to switch trucks to come here. But if we did that, it frees up this corner and we could put a stop sign. I, we can put a stop sign. You guys could put a stop sign. Do you, do you know what I mean? Because he wouldn't be backing his truck this way. He would just be stopping here at the corner. We got this road information from Kevin, the septic guy, had a, a survey of that corner that we basically got this off of. And let me see, is this, there's some up there. So this actually shows from the survey company how the road goes. So even though that that corner is in this, you know, encroachment, the road is way back out there. Because of that alone is the actual road.
The building's encroached on the right of way, not the road.
Yeah. And we also measured, because I figured it'd come up, you know, from center line, you know, where we are. We're way beyond the center line requirement. You, you know, like, you know how you put a stone wall or something like that? So this is where, well, this is way off the center line of the street. So this is what it would look like. You'd basically enter here and you'd have a lobby and then you have your boxes, you know, those box things, you know, where mailboxes. So that's what that would look like. And I guess that's all the information I have. I could try to answer any question you had. If you have a question. This, that has nothing to do with this, but we're actually restoring the old porch area to the building. You know, like they closed in that, kind of where the cash register Belmont store was. We're gonna make that an open porch. Because right now you basically get, you know, the rain just hits you like crazy. And we, we want to make the building compliant. And we can't really put a handicap ramp to the door because it's still higher. But we can enter that patio, not patio, but the porch from this side and have the ramp over here to the porch and then you can enter in, so. It kind of makes the ramp on our, you know, on our footprint, yeah. And it makes it easier that if you're coming in on a rainy day, this way you don't get swamped with rain or ice cubes or whatever that's flowing off the building.
This is one of the tanks, the storage tanks, is that right?
No, that's just, that's a bench.
Oh, it's a bench.
It's that bench. So when you.
Because there are, there are tanks here now.
No, the tanks are here. The diesel tank we removed.
Yeah.
The diesel tanks are both brown.
Yeah, we took it away.
It's gone.
We asked, uh, we asked the building gentleman, the fire marshal person in Rutland, if we could actually have that stored in the basement, because it's only, you know.
Two seventy-five.
Yeah, it's like an oil tank in a basement. So he said that we could do that. And because that, that was just an accident about to happen because it was sitting on the dirt rusting. So we had it removed. Again, we're trying to make, obviously, we're trying to little, because we're trying to make it better. And, but I don't know who and what department and what committee and what group of people would be interested in running with. Like I was standing out there today and almost got run over by someone coming this way and not slowing down at all. That stop sign could be helpful.
It would almost be easier to put a stop light there instead of a sign.
Well, no, I think, so we have signs on all three. We have, we don't have a traffic jam. We have basically.
If you consider coming, when you're coming up the hill on Tarboville Road, you've got to get to a point, in the winter time, you've got to get to a point where you can see. And there's just no, no way of getting restarted if it's an all slipper.
You can, if this is, if we make this kind of a, I won't say green space, but you know, that this doesn't have to pull off anymore. This can be a green space in essence, with the stop sign and a flagpole and stuff like that, so.
What are you thinking about for the landscape there? Is it gonna be?
Well, I'm saying that we could.
Brick or something?
Well, there'd be, so we'd have our handicap spot would be, like, I'd like to have a designated handicap spot here. And, you know, for the people, because there's huge activity going to the post office. And if we're making this ramp not a ramp anymore, that would be kind of ideal. I talked to, I forget her name, but she's very active in town. She's the old school teacher from New York. She lives on, right up the road a little bit. She has a can these days. It's a really nice lady. She's very involved. She just said it'd be nice if she didn't have to park far away and she could just get into the post office. She goes there regularly. So we're all completely open to that. And so this is just showing a bench you could sit at. But again, we were trying to kind of make this space instead of just a bunch of gravelly pavement and it's broken all up. We can make this kind of a green space and we could have that stop sign and a flagpole here. Kind of look like the niceness in our town. There's already a flagpole, but it's stuck against the building. It's like a leaning.
Yeah, so one trick will be, you know, one of the parts of that Belmont plan were to, to have crossings. And, you know, the actual placement of the stop sign will have to be sort of carefully.
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to, I don't want to decide it. I don't want to buy a stop sign. I'm just offering that it could be put on our land if you guys wanted to.
But this would be a good opportunity to, to have crossings here.
Yeah.
As well.
So anyway, I'm just offering that as an option then.
Are we, you're gonna leave this with us?
Well, if you like it, I'd.
Yeah, I think that would be nice.
Okay. Would you want this?
Sure.
Okay, so would you want?
All of them, if you don't mind.
Well, these are just duplicates, so.
Oh, they're duplicates, yeah.
These are, so those three, I do it. And so is there any objection to me changing this entrance, like, that you foresee? Like, I don't know what the procedure is for getting, you know, like, like I know in Connecticut, I go, you know, you know, and I get a formal something, but I know that.
Well, the, the one, one thing that I understand is that, given the, the post office is leased by the federal government, they have some.
They do, because they're, they have a, well, they're not objecting to us making it better, because right now they're not in compliance with ADA. So they're not objecting to the entrance being improved.
Yeah, so one part of ADA will be to, to make sure that there's a sufficient sidewalk here to reach the entrance, like, from these parking spots, which is gonna be tricky. Why can't? How many feet?
Well, you have the porch, so you can walk underneath cover basically for part of it.
Okay. Okay, so the plan is to use the porch.
Yeah, but the porch for the, but again, the, so this exits. You know, there's like a little bit of a pitch here, so this exits a grade at this end. So, but the, but the thing is that I can't change how the town was built years ago. I'm just trying to make, you know, improvements to what I can change.
What, I guess what I'm saying is one, one really desirable goal here, I think for everybody, is to have ADA compliant access. I think that's a really good thing, especially for the post office.
That's the concrete pad there, so.
Yeah, so if the new entrance to the post office is.
Well.
It's gonna be over here.
It's gonna be here. So, but I have to make it great, so I'm making two ADA entrances. One is to the post office, which would be on grade. You know, so there's no ramp, you know?
Oh, no, I don't understand that. But like width is a more interesting question, I think, here.
Because that's about sidewalk width to get down to the end of this ramp.
Getting out of your vehicle with a mobility device and, you know, that's like trickier.
Well, yeah, let me see if there's some, yeah, so that's four feet, that's three feet. There's three feet there, which is a typical.
Okay.
You know, so if you look at that, that's three and a half feet. So you have three and a half feet there from the existing porch.
Okay.
To our property line. And it's all paved, so it's not like but right now it's really problematic. You can't even open a door because the post mailbox is stuck in, in front of the door.
Well, I understand that. There's a lot of challenges where that is. And I applaud you for, for making a shot at this, so. Just trying to think about, so getting onto the porch.
So, so, because again, I need to.
You're gonna come in on.
I'm coming on this, I'm putting the, I'm building a ramp into the entrance on this side.
Okay.
So this is not really, so it's here, see, it's here.
Right, so really the ADA compliant spot would be here?
For the store, the ADA compliant spot for the post office is here.
So you would have to.
So you just want to be closer. If you want to be closer, you could be here too, and it's, this is just, this is great. But we're pushing this, we're not gonna.
So you're gonna bring the entrance to the store down, to the post office down? So right now, if, why, I don't use it as often as some people here, but right now the entrance to the post office is at the level of the porch, right?
It is, but there's a big dip because of this whole ramp thing here.
Yeah, so.
So if I make this level, I get rid of the grade.
The, the door's not gonna be in the same spot.
So you're dropping the whole floor in the post office?
No, he's bringing the grade up.
Right now, there's a big pit.
He's bringing the grade up.
John, the post office is currently right here.
Yeah, I got it.
Right? He's adding on over to here. Okay, and that's where the hole is. So the, this part, this is gonna be the new post office, correct?
Yeah.
And that is going to be built.
The lobby.
The lobby for the post office is going to be built lower than what the back room of the post office is.
He's, he's filling in the toll.
So there are two, two maxes within the post office?
There's, no, the post office where the people are, you're like the post person.
Yeah.
Can be at a different level than you.
Okay, so there would be two different levels.
Okay. Because that has no impact on each other. And the other is that this pit is gonna be filled in. So it gets rid of that problematic hole there in the corner. But it also, the other thing, I'm like, the, the town or the state, whoever paves these roads, you know, has been maintaining the road, but then we've had this whole, that this has kind of been no man's land. So if you've noticed, it's just gravel broken up, asphalt, it's all kinds of stuff in here.
Yeah, everything kind of flows down in the back.
It flows.
Put it more concretely.
Yeah.
So this elevation is not quite accurate, that this level here will not be this level here. You're proposing that the floor of the post office, the lobby of the post office be lower than the entry level of the store, correct?
I need to, so this is a preliminary. I need to, so this is a preliminary idea.
I just.
So I mean, I know, I don't know, and I'm also trying to understand it. That's what I've been working, you know, doing the, you know, the, taking apart the stuff. I also need to, once, if I got approval from you guys or your blessing or whatever happens, I will then start figuring this out and I'll have the, you know, um, architect figure out how the entrance grade is. One of the things I'd like to do, because my daughter's moving into that second floor apartment, I, I'd like to square this corner off. Like right now, so I can make her living room upstairs. Because the, the, and that corner is here. Right now, so I need to just kind of square the corner off and make the living room work because, you know, the, the, kind of the store is a hodgepodge. The current living room upstairs, I don't know if anyone's been up there, is on an angle, the floor, and it's eighteen inches lower than the, you know, the rest of the apartment. Because it was the roof of the old porch, so nobody ever took the pitch out of it. So I don't know how they put furniture in it years ago, but. It's on an angle, so I want to fix her living room for her. And so that's why I'm kind of pushing to see if, yeah, if I got, we could work out the details and, uh, you know, the, where are we designate parking and all that kind of stuff. If you guys are okay with me, uh, starting.
Basically, all, all you need is your, um, construction registration.
No, no, oh, with, we already have one registration with the town. We'd actually guess another registration, correct?
Well, this, this is going to be the, uh, the next thing, because the original BCR is, is quite general and it just says, you know, renovating the store.
Yeah, but again, I don't know. This square enough out here, that's a, that's a different ballgame.
Yeah.
So it's another fifty bucks or seventy five dollars?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty.
But, um, yeah.
We paid Kevin's, uh, bill from ten years ago.
Yes, um, but yes, if the footprint is changing, then.
Yeah, and it's gonna change the footprint. Not a lot, but it's gonna change.
So then I just come and fill out another, or my daughter will come up and she's gonna be here Friday, so she can fill out another form.
There you go.
Well, Friday, it's a little bit, but there's nobody here on Fridays, but.
Oh, sorry, we'll bring it to your house.
Monday.
Monday, okay.
Monday.
Yeah, but she's coming up on, on Friday, so. Yep.
Two things, I'm just, one with the coming up Tarbleville. Uh, it's, a stoplight would be good because then the person wouldn't have to try and edge out in to look left or right. Because you can't see it when you just have a stop sign there. It's difficult to see traffic coming either way. And the other question I have is there is a door from the. It gets closed then, it's. You're, you're, you're not. It's this window. Okay, so you're getting rid of the door between the store and the post office?
No.
There, there's a door between this? There is. Is that gonna? There, stay. At the post office, people really love this, the door to be able to go get lunch without going outside. Okay. They've asked me a couple of times.
How about it assesses an emergency exit as well?
Right.
Yeah.
Excuse me? It assists an emergency exit as well, the door between the store and there, for the people of the post office.
And, um.
So there won't be any more, um, uh, deer weighing, right? You'll be weighing deer any longer?
Oh, I don't think my daughter can pick up your deer and weigh it, but we could, if someone wants to volunteer.
There's a, a scale here, so they could put this.
We could put it in that corner, and if you get a, a strong volunteer to pick up the deer.
Well, they did, they did have a winch, list winch.
There's a list winch there.
There, there is.
So I'm not familiar with it.
But I see that winch is gone.
Okay, I didn't, we didn't own the winch. We didn't take it down. Uh, maybe Kevin took it or something. I, I don't know.
It, it was there until, wow, a few months ago.
Well, but, and we bought the store, there's been no winch, so. But again, we're open to being good neighbors, so if we need a winch for deer or moose or whatever, we can put one up.
I think the state, I'm not, I can't speak for it, I'm not sure, but I think the state sort of uses that, cause that's.
Is that, okay, but is it Ra, is Ryan the person that's the contact on that?
Ryan's not, no, I, I'm, I'm speaking out of school, I don't know who controls it.
To whom?
God, I can't think of his last name, Kerry.
So Kerry?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and again, these are pieces of information that we know nothing about, so we're happy to comply with the laws.
It would be, like, considered a official Vermont, um, game check station.
Yeah, and they, you know, and they, they sell game license, hunting, fish licenses and so on.
So again, we'll obviously cross that bridge when we get there, but, um, we've gotten rid of the mold, which is our kind of progress report here. The, uh, the, the old cooler was about to collapse into the year old, the, the old garage. I don't know if you guys know that, where the cooler was, was the garage when the Deverals lived there. And then when they expanded the store, they put a wood frame in and put the cooler on top. But the cooler sweated that for the last twenty years or something, and that whole floor system was just rock, just absolute.
Well, that, that and it burned out once, so.
Yeah, I don't know that, but.
Almost lost the store.
So, um, thank you for bringing this, appreciate it. Um, you said you wouldn't, you did, I, I very much appreciate that. I think, um, what I prefer to do is show this to Michael Allen, who you mentioned earlier with, who's putting together the Belmont Plan. I think this does in fact, uh, match his expectations or hopes for that.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is something the select board would want to see, particularly with respect to the traffic issues. Um, potential, you know, changing the traffic, um, with flow.
I'm not, I'm not trying to.
I know it doesn't dictate it, stop sign, it doesn't dictate.
No, 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 but I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm open, I'm just, I was offering that, but I'm just saying, but, can what I'm doing to improve the building, can I proceed with that with coming in, my, my daughter coming in Monday to give that filing and whatever else? And we'd be happy to meet with anybody who wants to give us some input on how to make stop signs and things like that.
I mean, I'm assuming that you're also, you've also got the state building permit.
We do, and we'd have to just go amend that also, but I didn't want to go amend that if you guys didn't like what I was telling you, so. It's a two step, man, it's an amendment, it's a year, twenty dollars, and it's, it's still falls under the dollars that we gave them, you know?
Well, as, as long as all the state permits required to run a commercial enterprise and make those changes and the federal discussion with the post office.
Yeah, the post office, yeah, so you wanna laugh, uh, the bureaucracy of Belmont is. The post office said that it is a year-long process for me to do all the changes I want to the post office. Because I'm talking with someone in Denver, and then I'm talking with someone in South Carolina who have jurisdiction over your post office.
Yeah, but, but these are the issues which you would be responsible for.
I am, I'm responsible for that. I'm, I'm dealing with that, yeah. No, because I want to actually, um, so just to, yeah, in the bigger scheme of things, because this has nothing to do with the entrance, we're proposing to take the main old store and make it a store again, and move the post office this way and push this post office back where the old bathroom was in the store. Um, and that's the change that we negotiated in the lease, and that, my daughter's working with them and they're, and I'm about that right now. But that has nothing to do with this entrance thing that I'm talking about. This is actually a physical change, the other is just more the square foot change between them.
And, um, in the process of all the renovations, are you upgrading the, uh, insulation and?
We are.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be, we're de-carbonizing the building.
Okay.
Which means we're gonna put solar panels.
You're aware of the residential energy standards, and I presume there may be commercial ones as well.
Yeah, we're gonna actually exceed them.
Okay.
Um, no, I'm, uh, I'm adverse to paying utility bills. So we're gonna, uh, we're, uh, we're putting a heat pump in the postal office, for example, we're literally trying to, um, you know, take as much of the old carbon footprint out of the building, so.
So just to be, you know, really specific here, what, what you're contemplating right now is entirely within the, um, within your lot.
It is, hundred percent.
So, um, any assumptions you're making about parking or this?
Yes, I'm not.
Okay.
Making any proposal on that.
That sounds good.
But I was offering that we're open to it.
Good, well, that's.
That's all, that's all. So this, that's why I wanted to show you that this is hundred percent within our lot.
Yeah.
And it's not approaching anywhere.
Okay. Any thoughts on this before we move on? It seems to me, and we can hear what the rest of the board thinks, that adding ADA access is, is overall a very good thing to do. Um, all the improvements you're making to the store aren't, aren't in fact needed. And if you're operating within the existing lot lines and not making assumptions about what lies outside or the streetscape.
Yeah, um, and we were just being, saying, I'm sure that we're all.
I mean.
So, so you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we are, yeah.
You agree?
Okay.
We're all set.
You're okay?
Yeah.
So I guess we'll see you Monday.
Uh, you probably won't see me on Monday, but you'll see.
Somebody here.
You'll see somebody.
Thank you, Davis.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. All right, so let's jump back into it here. I think correspondence, we had a couple of requests for information about what permits are needed, right?
Uh, yes, um, one was whether.
All right.
Thanks, do it. Um, one was whether or not, uh, permit is required for a new roof, replacement of a roof, to which I responded, no. Um.
That's the least of the problems.
Yes, um, and the other one that I had seen was to do with this Vermont, uh, the Route fifty five property, uh, regarding the, um, wetlands and forest, uh, flood hazard area. I didn't see anything else.
Okay.
Now, that, that one you mentioned down on one fifty five there, the flood hazard area, where does that fall in the flood hazard area?
Uh, the plot itself, um, stretches back from the road, um, probably about a thousand feet.
Yeah, back to the river.
Back to the river, and there's, and the river corridor flood hazard area runs approximately a hundred and fifty feet inward from the river.
Yeah, but they, they'd be well on the, this side of that flood hazard area, knowing any construction would be.
Yes, and there has been.
She was just asking you where the, of this, going the perspective, I was asking.
Okay, I was just trying to get a handle on it.
Well, that other house is way near the back, so that might have been.
You know, turns on automatically.
But in addition to the flood hazard area, apparently there is an issue around the access point regarding possible wetlands.
Oh, there definitely is.
No, they, there's one culvert there that's blocked about so big around.
Yeah, but, uh, the person who made the inquiry has been in touch with the wetlands ecologist. Who I think was planning a site visit.
Oh, I neglected to give my report. Um, I should add a couple of things real quick. There was discussion, again, about campers at the select board meeting. Uh, I related my information from the LCT, um, basically saying that since we don't have zoning, there's no land use regulation possible, but the select board could theoretically adopt a nuisance ordinance, but it would be difficult for them to characterize all RVs or campers as a nuisance. I asked what, um, effect they were trying to regulate, and it sounds like it was mostly a taxation issue. Um, so I think we just let it drop there. There was some discussion about whether there is the ability to influence taxation through ordinance, but it was unclear to me how. Uh, and whether that, I think it was not really, it wasn't clear direction given. So I think that's something that the select board will have to investigate if they want.
Yeah, that's, that's something that, uh, the taxation on that is the camper, tent, whatever has to be there over a certain amount period of time.
Well, the other question is, is like, is it parked on your lawn for the office?
Yeah.
Cause I don't think people would be very happy if you start taxing them when their stories are.
Yeah, no, this, this was, uh, so many months out of the year, like, um, for general purposes, uh, say eighteen months out of, out a period of time, then it's taxable, whether it's got wheels, registration or whatever, if it's not moved.
Seems to me like there must be some state rules on that already, that the town doesn't need to adopt anything, but anyway, that's up to them.
Addison County up there does it. They've got several, um, camping areas up there and they, uh, they tax the campers that stay there year round.
So we're gonna leave that there, let the select board follow up, if it doesn't look like a land use issue. Municipal planning grant, so I gave them a resolution, and there was no discussion, and they did not, um, resolve to perste the grant yet. It doesn't mean they won't, it just means they don't know what they think. Um, it would be a real. October, November, coming up. Um, November first, I think, I'd have to double check. So other information on that is, again, so one of the reasons for that is not only because we don't really have a good handle on our housing needs, which is one of the issues we're having with writing the town plan part, but the other part of that is, if in order to write a, any kind of regulation of short-term rentals, for example, you really should have a housing needs study to back it. Why would it be useful to do that? Well, there's many reasons. One of them is revenue. You know, the town is contemplating changes to EMS services, which will require lots more money coming in. And, um, one way to get it is through a short-term rental ordinance and regulation.
Why would you have a local short-term rental ordinance? Why not use the one percent sales tax?
Because you could put a six percent on it if you have a local one.
Well, no.
But could you, if you're out in town, add some sales tax in their town, so you pay more in rural town?
No, you could have, you have local option tax, but you really need an ordinance to regulate it.
Yeah.
So again, that's sort of like relating to my comments about, um, the relationship between state rules and having a local ordinance. If you don't have the local ordinance, people just generally won't follow the rules. Uh, but it's not just about taxation. It's about, um, public safety and some other things. You really do want to have a housing study, then go to an ordinance, then do your taxation.
Yeah.
Um, and that provides the best coverage and protection for the town through, you know, if it has to go to court. If you don't have those things, you're gonna spend a lot of money and legal fees all the time. So it's been strongly recommended by the LCT that you start that way. So it seems to me that before we get into budget season, we should be thinking about starting this process, but ultimately, the select board will decide. I'll make another pitch next month, although the short, the time to write the grant will be much shorter. Ludlow has already done this. They have a fiscal year twenty-three municipal planning grant to do exactly that. A housing needs assessment. Rutland Regional just came out with theirs, but it doesn't have the level of detail we would need. I reached out to them to see if they would do a study for us for free. They said maybe, and then they said no. So I was promising there for like two days. Um, but they said, go ahead and apply for the grant, so we might be able to contract with them with grant money. That's the model that Ludlow used. Ludlow received a grant of twenty-two thousand or so, or no, twenty thousand and eighteen of that is, um, was two thousand match, and they are contracting with the Mount Ascotny Regional Commission. They're in a different district. So, so that's that, so, uh, we'll see what the select force knows about that. Uh, the Belmont Plan is proceeding. Comments are just trickling in. There's a few more.
The village.
The village, yeah. And, um, I'm hoping there'll be a, you know, final version of that, um, shortly, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. That municipal planning grant is drawing to a close. All expenses have to be submitted this month. What else did I have? What else did I have? Not much, so. Oh, and then at the select board meeting, this is sort of useful for you to know. At the select board meeting, Jeff got the board's approval for moving forward with at least one flood buyout. That's on one fifty-five. That is the um Harrison property, I believe. Well, I was supposed to say the name. Roberts?
Yeah, it was Roberts.
It was Roberts? Ryan Roberts.
I mean, they were on the call, and Jeff said the people are on the call, even though I can't say who they are.
Right, cause there was a couple that that were interested, and I think that's the one that definitely wants to move forward.
Yeah, cause that one's gonna wet twice now.
So anyway, that's that's interesting for for land use because what happens after the buyout is becomes public access land, so the open space that people can use. No, unfortunately not. That there's a couple of them that would be nice to get, no, you know.
Did anybody approach them? Or didn't they get wet?
I don't know. Don't getting wet was not a requirement. If you're in a flood hazard area, or even if you're not, or even if you're um subject or you're at risk of flooding, buyouts are available. So if if people know houses that are in harm's way, that those people would be interested, please let me know.
But it takes years.
We'll see. This one's going forward. So the first thing that has to happen is an appraisal and but it's a hundred percent buyout. No cost to the town. It's pretty neat.
Um, so has anybody talked to um the people at the boost group?
I don't know. The people, the guy?
Well, I was.
If you wanna make a call.
I don't even know how to get in touch with them.
I think that one is certainly one that's right in the thick of things, so. All right, so we're here, we're here after eight fifteen. So I guess this could be part of my report, and then we'll segue right into um new business, but I found out that I had thought that our approval process was very similar to the bylaw. It's very similar, but it's not exactly the same. We need thirty days' notice between our final draft and our hearings, or even notice given out to neighboring municipalities and their hearing. So we can't have a hearing, even if we've had, even if we had a final draft today, which we don't and probably won't, we can't have our hearing at our regular meeting in October. We need thirty more days. So that in addition to finding out that regional planning commission had a whole bunch of requirements we didn't need, we're not gonna get it done as soon as we hoped. I think we're gonna have to have a special meeting next month, beginning of next month, and then maybe we can get our our draft done then, and then we'd be thirty days out from there.
Can we, we can vote on it?
Can we vote on it?
Is that a regular meeting?
It's cause it's not, it's not our final um approved approved version until the hearing.
Okay.
The here, it's just going forward to a hearing.
So having looked at the slightly confusing instructions, my understanding is thirty days before planning commission hearing, you send hard copies to adjoining um flat towns and interested parties.
Yeah, of which we don't have any.
We need to clarify. Uh, we also need to send electronic copies to uh DHCD.
Yeah.
And then fifteen days before, we have to post the notice of the public hearing to the newspaper of record and um the
Right.
uh physical locations here, together with a summary and various other bits of information, so we need to prepare that. And then after the planning commission hearing, it was unclear how long the planning commission has to amend to make any amendments.
As long as we want.
Right.
And then it's thirty days again after that. Then you send it to the
Select Board.
The select board.
And then they go through that same process again.
With thirty days' notice or up to a hundred and twenty days.
Right.
They could.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they could choose not to to vote on it, of course.
Yeah.
But then we then we sink the village plan, which is a bummer. I mean, the village designation.
Right. Um, okay.
That's like sort of been driving my schedule and our schedule is how you get that darn village designation renewed. Cause if we don't, then we lose out on grants, which of which we need many. Um, all right. I don't know if we can do this quickly, but let's make a shot at it. We have a updated BCR form, which um adds. Has anybody, everybody seen it?
Uh, I think I have.
Took off the dreaded map.
Yes, just just for comparison, this is this one is the old one, which has got the map. And this is the new one, which is much more specific about the question.
People hate the map and for good reason. We made it prettier, but it's still impossible to use. And it now asks about flood hazards.
I looked, I looked at it. Um, so they don't need to tell us where it is anymore?
Yeah, it's got the address field. I mean, that map looks.
Is all of the ones that I have reviewed since I took this position that nobody has ever walked in it.
And nobody ever looks at the S really.
None of the ones you just reviewed has an X on it.
Yeah, well, it was so small, I didn't see it, but.
Did I see?
This is the new.
Yeah, that's what better. Makes sense.
Yeah.
And it makes and it makes it so everybody is also aware, like if they have to get a permit or not.
Yeah, this is where to go. This was a question that came up, where to go to get the information. There's links and stuff and hopefully.
Yeah.
If you download it from the webpage, the link is a live link too, so. It won't help it too much with the print copies, but you know.
Well, at least about it asks, so like somebody does.
I'm going to approve it, or I'm going to approve it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the updated BCR form?
Aye.
Aye.
I will um post it on the website and make sure that Carol has hard copies of the correct.
Great.
The new one, so we'll go right into.
Be approved by the select board.
What's that?
Doesn't this change have to be approved by the select board? Since it's part of a town ordinance somewhere.
It's not part of the ordinance, no.
Yeah, it is. It's part of, there is an ordinance.
We can move on. So update information for homeowners guide. So this was actually mentioned in the select board meeting too. So there's a desire by the select board to have information relating to what you know, guidance is is available for what do you have to do when you build.
Is that the nine twenty materials that in that email?
Yeah. So we had this guide on the webpage for for a couple of years. And and they did a lot of the hard work here to to rewrite it, so. We've learned a couple of things since we wrote it. We really didn't admit it, but we didn't really know about the state fire permits initially. And we didn't really include the flood hazard stuff, so. Do you see it?
Yeah, I got it pulled off the.
Uh, I'm.
It doesn't really need a a motion necessarily, but it's, cause it's just a guide.
I made some changes on the Google Drive version, but I don't see them now.
Change is.
Some edits, I made some suggested edits.
Oh, that aren't represented here?
Um. They would appear as, you know, strikeouts. I did it on yesterday afternoon.
Oh, yesterday? I didn't look at it yesterday. No, I'm sorry. This was on there since last week, I think.
Okay.
Um, did you tell me that you did though?
I didn't, but but you you would have received a notification, so I had made some suggestions. They were very minor.
You wanna just, okay, so do you remember what they are? You could just tell us and actually, we don't really need to approve it. I just would like to just so you have the opportunity, just.
So, yeah, I mean. Of course, we don't have any really permit for driveway. Did they? Yeah, we made a permit for driveway access.
No.
Okay.
For what?
Driveway access, cause I was gonna say like if there was like a more along the lines of checklist forum to be like, yes, 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 done through.
Yeah.
Instead of like comply with state and town requirements, well.
It's hand wavy.
Like, yeah, like what are the town requirements? Like, this is why I would read this, is because I'm wondering what the town.
It's a fair point.
Versus, and like, we can't speak to the state, so you could give almost
Yeah.
like, this is the website where you can find the state ones, but like I think it would avoid us having people come and be like, hey, like, what do I have to do to fill?
It's a tricky one right now because the the driveway access stuff needs to be.
Yeah, but but I mean, like, but comply with.
That's the only one I can remember.
Okay.
With town requirements, so let's just say, okay, what are the requirements that we have? Okay, we have flood hazard area or corridors.
Right.
And just like that.
Yeah, so this is a guide. We can update it again. I was just hoping to be able to give it to Carol with the new BCR, have Faith give it to Carol with the new BCR form. The select board was interested to see this handed out at the same time.
Yeah, I I mean, these would be helpful. It could be handed out when they might just, but like.
It'd be nicer if it was a more explicit.
Yeah, like comply with state and town, like state and town requirements, but I mean, it says comply with town requirements. Well, if I'm reading this, I'm wondering what the town requirements are. You don't need to tell me that I need to comply with them. You need to tell me what they are.
Right.
Like, you need a BCR. Are you in a flood hazard area? You needed this. And that stuff is on the BCR, but there's not. I guess, like you said, it's very hand wavy, like comply with town requirements, and then somebody's going to show up at a meeting and be like, what are the town requirements?
Yeah, and then maybe the way it is for now, we can. But I I I hear you. I I agree with you. It would be nice if we could have a checklist.
Yeah, or something that's.
Let's see, how could we do this? Do we wanna do a, do we wanna do a motion on this, or should we just like roll with it?
I don't know if we need one. I mean, it's not a bylaw. No, it's just an information handed out.
Page on the website that prints it out.
That's fine. We don't need one.
Yeah, okay, all right, so you've reviewed it, okay, good. Town plan, approved draft for public hearing, not gonna happen. So let's go schedule public hearing, also not gonna happen. So let's go to our checklist from our PC. That's sort of like, I think, our essentials, right? How do we do this? Should I just bring it up and show you what I tried to do to address these things?
Well, we are bad, right?
Yeah, I got my own open book. Jim doesn't have to see. You got a copy of town plan, Jim?
Oh, somewhere in here.
Is it a new one? If not, we can just do it on the big screen.
Um, I also received in hard copy a couple of comments from David Johnson.
Okay. Peter, is it okay if I share my screen?
Do it.
Right.
Small corrections.
Where did you add the information on the statistics?
I'll show you. Yeah, so David's got some good comments here, so we'll try to squeeze that in too. Um, first time, the first thing I I think I wanna get your consent to how I've addressed the ones that we have addressed, and then sort of decide the general idea and how to go forward with the to-do items. And then we'll try um to have the goal of nailing those to-do items at the for the next meeting. How does that sound? Good? Um, I still can't share the screen.
Oh, uh, sorry, I didn't know you were asking my permission. Did I get it now? One second.
I can just bring up the Google Doc so we can actually. It depends.
I couldn't find it on the Google Drive today.
Okay.
I don't know if I could, I.
Should be good to go.
Good.
Wouldn't that be hilarious?
What?
I said, did you totally did John? He's like, wouldn't that be hilarious? Not really. It's a pretty sick sense of humor, but okay.
Yeah.
Man, I used your name, I used shared with me, I used a bunch of different things, so I couldn't get it anywhere.
All right.
John, you should be good to go.
All right, yeah, it's working. Thank you.
Okay.
Meeting, town plan, here we go. I'll just straighten up the bullets. All right. I have it back, actually. Thanks. Oh, that was that? Okay. You can have it afterwards. All right, demographic information was the first thing. Now, sometimes some towns have their own like special area for that stuff. And our old town plans did have a very extensive history section. We opted not to do that. So what I thought could. I put some in housing. Housing trends. I need to make that a little bigger, don't I?
Where is that? Seventy-seven.
Isn't it? Okay, so that's demographic information. I don't know if that's gonna be enough for them, but it seems like I also took a cheated a little bit and looked at um the recently approved Killington plan, and they kind of did something similar to this. So pulled stuff off of that census website.
I mean, that's pretty best like we can, unless somebody wants to go knocking door to door, which I don't think is what they're expecting us to do.
But I mean, that's, does that seem like good demographic information for housing? Does that cover it for you guys? Does for me?
I don't, I would prefer it to be done.
So far. That's all of it for trends. And then the other demographic part is in at the beginning of it must have been, uh, let me go back to the meeting. This may be not the easiest way to do this. I think I have some in economic, yeah, economic development trends. Go there. So this is the demographic with relating to employment and income? What?
I just laugh at those numbers.
Which one?
Forty percent. Fifty-nine, three ninety-five.
It's the median income.
Median income.
I don't even come close to that.
Which means.
Household, household.
Household, don't even come close to that.
But it means half the people are above and half are below, right?
People are tired because.
Yeah, so it's it's not a mean either, so median. So it's sort of a line through the middle of the chart.
Mean would be average.
Yeah.
It's not average, it's.
Mean would be very much skewed by zeros and millions.
Yes. But the median is half the people are above and half the people are below, right?
No, that's mean.
Yes.
Yeah, the in in a numerical counting, yeah.
Yeah.
Forty percent is um called not in the workforce, which is a fairly high number.
So just only uh fourteen percent of residents are living in poverty, is that based on the Vermont definition of poverty or what?
Um, I'm assuming it's US.
Yes.
We could look that up. Maybe we should put a definition of poverty.
Well, you got it from the, you got it from the Census Bureau, right?
No, American Community Survey, which is related to the census, but. No, American Community Survey, which is related to the census, but, so yeah, definition of poverty, I think that's a good idea. Oh, I'm making notes on yours. I'll make a note, I'll make a note of this one. Define define poverty. Okay, so that's what I did for demographics, so that I considered checked off. Population in housing, income and employment in economic development, does that work for you guys? Did you, well, did you see the rest of this? There's a little bit.
Yeah.
I tried to find those things that were real, you know, in interesting and related to jobs, so commuting and working from home and that sort of stuff. Alright. Can we move on from demographics? Is there anything that's really, you'd really like to include? Alright, cool, energy resources.
You moved some.
I totally moved a chapter and I just put a link in its place. So we had um in utilities and facilities, we had energy. And now it just says see energy facilities. Okay? Good enough, so that in in energy, the energy chapter now has subheadings for. Um, all of the text is the same, I just kind of separated it into citing. So where things can go, efficiency. And facilities, which is a copy and paste of that other chapter. Work for you?
So where is that new one?
Seventy two.
Yeah, it's, well, seventy four, really.
I didn't realize that uh Ludlow light had had any of our people.
Any what?
Number of people on the power.
Oh, you mean that Ludlow electric services any of ours?
Yeah, Ludlow light.
Where do they service?
Sure, where is it supposed to be?
Where where do they service? Small number of, is it one oh three, okay.
Yeah, it's it's not totally clear to me which ones, but it's on, there's a map somewhere that shows it. Um, okay, so that's what happened there for energy resources, that good, that work?
Wait, it's under facilities now?
No, there's an energy chapter.
Oh.
And the energy facilities got moved to the energy chapter, because apparently that's what they go for.
Alright.
I don't know. Um, make this a goal, I just added a goal, exactly as he said.
Mine is it?
So I'll go back, I'll show you. This is in the objectives in the very beginning. I think I made it the last one, just I think it's twenty, yeah, there you go, I just wrote it down. Exactly as he said it, so checks off, does that bother you any, guys? Doesn't bother me, as long as we get it checked off, okay. Statement at the beginning of natural resources, I just added it. Literally just put in exactly what he told me to, I think that's cool. I mean, I I'm glad he was very specific about what they needed, so let's see, where where is this? Natural resources, that must be in preservation, natural environment. Oh, actually, I put it before it, so this is literally the text he told me to write. We had gone, this paragraph wasn't there before, and we just went right into natural environment. It kind of describes the chapters, there, you know, paragraphs that come after it, natural areas. Work for you?
Yes.
Works for me. Economic development's a little bit harder, and I added a couple things that I think we can. We can do. So I looked at Killington and saw what they did. Um. Okay, so the trends we added, the challenges were all part of the text before, so these are some things I I think we need to do. He said a requirement is to say what what location type and scale is your desired industry.
And Steven had a comment on that.
What?
Steven had, or Andrew, Andy had a comment on that.
Oh, did he? An email?
Yeah.
Email. There were several emails, I don't come up on the thing.
Uh, basically saying we should describe what commercial activity is desirable and undesirable. Um, based on things like noise, fumes, affluent traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I was thinking about, we really don't want any big box stores, I mean.
That's that's, this, that's the next thing, third thing down, so where it should be, where it should not be. And what's too big, so let's just have a quick, I don't know, what, I mean, it seems like, you know, home enterprises. Small, you know, uh, owner operated industries like property management. Construction, um excavation and stuff, all very much part of our our.
Small scale.
Small scale, but where's the line? So where does it go to be like?
I know.
What's an example of something we don't wanna see?
Well, you don't wanna see.
Everybody's opinion, the problem with saying small scales, everybody's opinion on small scale, obviously, like, I'm assuming Bridget, that means she doesn't want casellas moving in. With their construction company up in Belmont building.
Yeah.
Um, like.
I mean, what I was thinking.
Construction is not a small scale technically, but does it bother anybody that's over by them, or would having another operation like that?
People on Stewart Road that that don't like it. He's, um, you know, I like Brett, I'm very friendly with Brett, you know, the truck's always turned on the rubber.
Yeah, you're gonna find somebody that doesn't like something no matter where you go.
Yeah, but so we got, so apparently, you know, we tried to get away from it, we tried to get a skirt around not putting anything specific. But they're gonna expect it now, apparently.
Well.
Where do we draw the line?
I think.
Hundred plus employees.
Thinking of the.
That's big.
What?
Hundreds?
Said a hundred plus employees.
Are you gonna be that specific?
I have no idea.
Well, you know, you you think about it though, you know, you you say some people on Stewart Road, but Brett. Operation even on Stewart Road is very small scale.
It's relatively small.
It's very small scale, all his equipment and work and everything are out on job sites.
Right.
Right.
But even if.
And when the job site is done, yes, then stuff moves back, but it's only here a little while, then it's gone again.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's.
Well, and I'm thinking the place like, is it Brown Rent Equipment Rental Place down in?
Oh, yeah.
London near?
Yeah.
London area.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big operation.
Yeah, he takes up a couple acres.
But, you know, it's not like.
But even then, he's not.
I know.
Obtrusive.
I know, it's not huge, earth moving.
No, it's it's not like uh United down there in Springfield.
Right, monstrous.
We'll have to figure out a way to characterize it, like, well, how how do we describe it, you know, could you use employees, you could use like the amount of like paved. Surface area, you know, like big parking lots or.
Yeah, about that, yeah, yeah.
Lights?
Yeah.
Well, that's already in our lighting section, right?
Yeah.
No more artificial light.
Yeah.
I mean.
But I think you should have it around the the economic stuff.
Two ways, it can be very helpful for like water quality and stuff, for surrounding people, like capturing stormwater. And so on and so forth.
It does that, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, if somebody was to pave a parking lot, it'd be part of.
You would have, so.
I mean. What if Rutland, if Seven South moved into Mount Holly? You know, the. Um, car dealers, the Hanafords, all that kind of stuff.
Shopping local, yeah.
I'm just saying for describing what we want or don't want.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, yeah, how do we put it? How do we describe?
Problem is, I don't see that happening.
Well, that's what, that's all there's been, it's like, we can, we can put something that checks the box here. But my question is, is the reality is like, we have such a small population, Hanafords doesn't want wanna move here. Or any of the rest.
Even a car dealership, you know, would they really wanna move here?
Well.
Too inaccessible for them.
But the problem is that if Rutland's gonna flood, Ludlow's gonna flood.
We could.
And they could capture both markets.
Very easily get like mega storage units.
Yeah.
We have a small storage unit, but you could imagine a really big one.
Yeah, and that's something I could see more that would actually happen than like a a big chain store.
I mean, it could be like right along our, you know, prettier areas, they could just pave the whole thing, could happen.
And and a storage unit is. Doesn't provide economic activity.
Very little, just tax.
Right. And it, but it doesn't, it's not gonna be noise or fumes or any of those things either, so it might.
Traffic.
Yeah, so it might be more desirable than.
A lot more desirable.
Yeah. So.
The way some people feel about solar panels, I think I feel about storage, if you, they're, they have really proliferated. And I think they're just about the worst things, like so gross.
I know, but that's not.
So it's so tacky and so ugly and I don't know, it's like I can think of, there's so many nice fields around that have just gotten paid. Have you seen how many have gone in over the last few years? Everywhere, everywhere you look, but.
Well, but that has a bigger problem, that's people over consuming and not.
Well, I think it's like partly related to the non-resident population.
They let them put in the storage units and then put the solar panels on top.
Yeah. Did we say anything about solar panels in there?
Well, we got a little section of their land use that you can't put them in a field.
Yeah, energy section.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know what to write there, we need to decide that, um, I can try to come up with something for next meeting.
You what?
It's bigger than ten by ten shed, we don't want you.
I mean, there are a number of businesses in that.
Really, you could imagine some very cool businesses coming in that would.
There are some amazing businesses already, the welding guy on one oh three, the.
With junk.
Yeah, they uh skylight stuff that Dan Coranto does.
I mean, even like Catamel over there, like.
Which one?
Catamel, the secure, or not Catamel, uh.
Countryside.
Countryside.
Yeah.
Well, that's a main, that's a biggest employer.
Yeah, but like looking at.
How many employees does he have?
I don't actually know the answer to that.
You see?
He don't know that many.
He doesn't? He has housing there on site for him.
Yeah. He he might have a dozen.
Oh, is that all?
No, he, I mean, he's, he's a big asset, but.
That doesn't look terrible.
I think it depends on who you talk to, their neighbors, like.
Well, he owns all the neighbors over there.
Um, so, okay, so that's something we definitely need to figure out, that's probably one of our biggest nuts to crack for the next draft. Um, other things that I think would be interesting, I saw in the in the Killington plan and some other places. Um, we haven't mentioned the reappraisal, we probably should.
Why is that in a town plan?
It's probably the most significant thing in like the last couple of decades in terms of economic development and revenue for the town. And the diff- it differs between.
No.
Yes, absolutely.
That happens regardless of what's in a plan, that's re- that's dictated by the state.
That that's dictated by the numbers.
It's the, one of the biggest thing that's happened to this town in a very long time in terms of.
Yeah, cause we managed to keep the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
Number.
Certainly, I don't understand, what is your point?
That it doesn't belong in the town plan.
You're wrong, so it of course does.
No, it doesn't.
Of course it does, no, what's going to get in there?
It has.
It has a huge impact on the ability of our government to fund initiatives, it has a huge impact on the grand list.
But it's, so I just, I believe, correct if I'm wrong. What Bridget's saying is like, there's already functions in place that say that we have to conduct a reappraisal when property values. Self are over a certain amount of.
Yeah, when we're out of.
You're not listening to me, so I'm not talking about having a policy to do a reappraisal. To acknowledge that it's happening and it's gonna influence the grand list, the grand list is, so this is economic development chapter, guys?
Yeah.
That's a huge factor in economic development. For a number of reasons.
Is supposed to be guiding future development.
Or future growth, which is economic development.
Isn't that?
That's part of it, sure, well, I don't understand your point. You don't think that it's relevant to the economic growth and future growth of the town?
No.
Okay, I completely disagree.
It has nothing to do with it.
That's totally wrong.
That's not true.
It's, so, uh, how many, how many different ways?
You're gonna explain some more.
Your ability to provide services for the town is is dictated by what? The grand list?
The taxes that you collect.
Are decided by what? The grand list?
The taxes are set by your budget and your um, what the state lets you collect.
Secretly.
You're not, putting something in the town plan is not gonna change the direction of any of this.
Neither, wait a minute, neither is adding demographic information.
That's background for the, so you're wanting to do this as background? I mean, they get, you get.
Part of, I'm gonna add it in and then we can discuss that, so it belongs in there in my opinion. Um, so it's not in there yet, so.
How come when their towns put it in?
Why?
Yeah.
I'll add it in and you'll tell me what what you don't like about it, so another thing, adding taxable value from housing. So your ability to, the economic development of your town is largely determined by the taxable value from housing. You build more, you'll get more, that's how it works, we should add something that says that, I'm gonna ask Liz what she thinks too. Um, the difference we see.
So we have a community where additional development has lowered taxes. And provided.
Asking it to lower, we're asking for more money for the town to spend, correct?
Partly.
Yeah, it's not asking the lower taxes, we're not looking to lower taxes.
Economic development helps the town, it's 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 like a a thing that happens on balance. Some towns choose specifically not to have economic development because they don't wanna grow and increase the costs of ser- providing services.
Right.
That's a choice you make. So what we are facing in this town is sort of the opposite, in that we have uh underfunded services. And we have very little growth to supplement that, or to to provide for that.
That's where you were complaining about too many houses being developed out in the rural areas and. And this talks about the proliferation of second homes and that kind of stuff in here.
But so you can, you can get more tax dollars by the reappraisal and the grand changes to the grand list.
And by well guided growth, so i- if you put in. You could, if you, in many towns they're doing it, so take for example this Killington plan I was just reading today. So they put in, they the town partially funded, I think maybe through loans too, but partially funded. Um, a fairly huge residential development, partly for their seasonal workers. And they like get, that's like sort of is a pays pays itself back. Because of all of the increase in tax revenue, according to their plan, so they, it's like a win-win for them. It, what we we have, from what I understand, is a huge gap between. Um, the ability to pay for deferred maintenance and existing services, not adding like crazy new stuff. Like I said, we're talking about, we do not have like a hundred thousand dollars we need to to get ambulance. To our, to to everybody's homes. Where's that money gonna come from? We just don't have it, so there's multiple possibilities on where to get it, you can have new taxes. The grand list can change, and the state's gonna make it change, that will increase revenue to the town, how much? I would like to know from the treasury how much. In the Killington plan, it actually says how much is gonna change, and how much, a lot of it goes to the education. Um, fund, which we don't see, generally speaking, we don't see that. Um. But that's, that's something a town plan is is supposed to be about, it's supposed to be a, what is our plan for the future?
Get us out of being a spending, ascending town.
Hmm?
Get us out of being a sending town.
So anyway. Another thing that would really, in in fact, Killington is doing this too, is they decided that um. It's a net win for them to have a municipal wastewater system in certain areas and a municipal water system in others that they don't have already. Because it's, they're they're not doing it for any other reason than for economic development apparently, or maybe that's the primary reason, maybe there are other insulator reasons. Um, so I think those are things that I'd like to take a shot at including. It's, you know, for the next meeting, if we can't get them done. It's, you know, for the next meeting. If we can't get them done, we can't get them done, but um, the the first few are requirements. So, let's just jump into the next one, since that's basically what those are all to-dos. Um, add the word diverse to goal ten. I added the word diverse. Housing is another one that we don't have a a lot, that a few things missing that we need. Alright, so, this is how it was described. Housing, inventory, your housing needs, both location and type. I have no idea what that means. So, I thought we kind of did that without I mean, sort of hand waving and not very specific. So, in order to sort of draw um, a little bit of attention to that, I called it part needs. So, we had identified that aging in place and um, providing for seniors was an important goal. We also said that providing for younger families was an important goal. And we mentioned a couple of different ways to do that without developing new lands, including accessory dwelling units and other kinds of infill housing. Beyond that, um, what do you think our housing needs are? We probably should mention something a little bit more specific about lack of long-term rentals.
So, I have a few questions about the long-term rentals. I understand that we need some for employees in town. But my other question is, is that with the amount of short-term rentals and second well, I shouldn't say second homes, but second homes that we have in town, how many people are actually working that are looking for long-term rental?
I get about two calls a month.
Quite a few people are looking for long-term.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's, I was generally asking like what is the, like, is there any information out there about how many, like what we need for a long-term rental?
So, that's.
There's nothing on the market, is the bottom line.
Yeah, there's nothing like anywhere around us either, like in any of the surrounding towns.
Right.
Right.
And so.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, what is our our need like in town for the people that work in town or stuff like that versus what is the need for the region that people are just looking in our town for?
Well, so I think there's a couple, so I I I think what I hear you saying.
Call some people necessarily working in town and get calls from people who want, who need housing.
Well, that's.
Working in or out London, Ludlow or wherever.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm asking is like.
Well, so let's say, for example, for um, you know, in in maybe, maybe just putting the cart before the horse, but it's like i- if we assume that we are gonna still use like volunteer fire services. You know, uh, do we have an affordable housing market that will allow that kind of thing to 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 continue um, without long-term rentals available? So, I mean, not, going forward, it's gonna be very difficult for lots of people, like working people. Like they, you know, without another politically correct term, it's normal people to afford to live in this town. Like they're just, it's crazy.
More middle income.
Yeah, like middle-income people, just you can't possibly buy, I don't, you got
the, but this competition is gonna be there no matter what there is for. Like, the competition for housing is still gonna be there even if we do something unless we do like an affordable housing type situation. Right? I mean, cause like if we allow people to build to make it so we have affordable housing, there's still gonna be more money higher that comes and buys it.
Well, the rent, no, rent doesn't necessarily scale up the way a home price does.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
But it does when people wanna buy the homes and don't want to rent them.
Right.
To buy, like buy them for the second home or.
Well, or buy. But what's what's also happening now is people are buying them specifically for short-term rentals. So, they like never do a reg- regular rental. So, anyway, so how do we, what do we wanna write in terms of what our needs are? So, part of your question is like, how many rental units do we need? I have no idea.
If you built twenty rental units tomorrow morning.
They'd be full.
Uh, they'd be full and you'd still wouldn't have any.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when, like, whenever we go for a regular town.
statewide.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, when are we also just absorbing stuff from like, oh, I can't get a place in Shrewsbury and I can't get a Wallingford, but I can get one in the hall?
Well, I don't know. You definitely, I mean, Ludlow, I I was talking to the project commission chair in Ludlow, I think they have like two or three long-term rentals left in Ludlow.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's none available anywhere.
Well, that's because, I mean, there there are, but people want a lot of money for them because they can make so much more with short-term rental.
Yeah. Well, longer, long-term rentals are going up pretty high now too.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, but.
I mean, you take Burlington, uh, such a big area, they have nothing. They're building, what is it, two hundred units now?
True.
And they still ain't got enough.
Yeah. So, I don't know how we, I don't know how we do this.
I don't know how you.
I mean, you could say the housing shortage of the state of Vermont is reflected as well here in in. Why?
We got affordable housing. Well, I haven't even gotten to affordable housing yet.
My neighbors have figured it out. Your neighbors have figured it out?
What is it?
Okay.
So, okay, so that's one thing we need to do is housing needs, inventory of housing needs. I don't know how we do that without a study, but.
There's absolutely no way to do it without a study.
So, we have senior.
It doesn't it say that you're gonna do a housing study?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we gotta do and then maybe.
And he said, we're deficient in this, so I I'll try to read back and see what that means. So.
He said we're deficient in.
We don't have an inventory of housing needs, location and type.
Well, that's why you were in there, that we need to do a housing needs.
No, it's like, it's already there. Anyway, so, alright, move on. Actions to address housing needs of low and moderate income households. So, that's the affordability part. Actions to address it.
The housing needs study needs to talk about that too. I mean, it needs a whole study on that whole issue.
I mean, the the hard part for us and like, I think Ludlow and all the surrounding towns because of the our location. And I understand it has to be part of the town plan, so we gotta figure out a way to put it in there. But the reality is, is that the making long-term rentals affordable, the only way to do that is with government subsidy. Because like private entities, unless you do it for the good of your heart, you can make a lot more doing short-term rentals.
Because we're in a, in a resort town.
But what are you gonna do? Tell people that they can't short-term rental their house?
Yeah.
That's what you wanna do?
I mean, that's why, it's a free market and that's why everybody's buying up houses to do his short-term rentals.
And you go up and knock on the door and tell them they can't do that.
Well, I.
Cause I ain't gonna.
Until the market's saturated, it's gonna be what happens.
Well, the regulations.
I think there are also ways in which you could um, basically raise revenue from such short-term rentals which would cover some of these uh town services.
Right.
It wouldn't address the affordability issue, but.
So, two, here's two, two examples. So, Killington takes all of, according to what the the people who administer it, all of the revenue from short-term rental um, regulation and taxation and use it for fire services and emergency services. Every cent that doesn't go to the maintenance costs of the. Hold on. Uh, Ludlow's plan is to put it all into housing. So, there's two sides to that. One is services, one is housing. So, Ludlow's plan, whether they do it or not, is still uh to be determined. They're gonna take it all and I guess try to build housing with it. And so, Killington has also done that, but it wasn't from the proceeds of short-term rental taxation. They're doing it as a separate issue because they need more um, they need a better labor labor market.
Now, how what, how heavy are they taxing the short-term rentals?
And also my next.
Two percent, ten percent, twenty percent?
No, you get one percent is part of it. It's all the state gives you.
But my next question about it was.
Killington makes quarter million dollars a year from it.
Yeah, well, and my other question is this, so the town does decide to do something, if they did, or we put it in the town plan, that we should do something with supplemental supplementing housing. We, like, when are we starting to solve, oh, well, Ludlow hasn't built enough of it, so now they're just coming here and we're paying for Ludlow's worker housing situation?
Well, I I don't think it's quite is like a uh, a competition or it's like their problem. We also need young families to sustain a community. Doesn't matter that they work in Ludlow. I mean, that's sort of a low-key job. It's actually a pretty good job, right? Um, you know, it's not necessarily their issue. So, we would like to see more economic development. We'd like to see our school have be got capacity.
Isn't it? I thought last year we read a hundred and four.
No, capacity is a hundred and forty. So, um, we wanna see um, you know, our our local services be staffed and have a volunteer pool and vibrancy in the community. Because if you don't have those workers, you know, and they're sort of like, you you just become a wealthy retirement community, right? So, you die if you don't have a um, what do you call it? A diversity of economic classes, if you wanna call it that. Um, so I don't, I don't know. I feel it really comes down to like, you know, solving Ludlow's problems. Uh, we're definitely gonna, we're seeing the heat from Ludlow one way or the other. I mean, it's influencing our housing market.
And that's my point is, maybe it's not, shouldn't say solved their problem, but we are taking heat for their.
Our store community, yeah, and we're, we're a bedroom community for them. But there's really no way around that.
Well, we're bedroom community for them and for all of them.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And Killington.
Killington too, for sure. Okay, so we need to come up with an answer for addressing the housing needs of, well, affordable housing. So, I don't know what to do.
How about we build twenty tiny homes over on your property there, John?
Well, thank you.
We can use them for a short-term rental.
No, long-term.
Either one, split them up, ten for each.
Like, yeah, ten bucks a month. Power hood.
So, ten bucks a month, yeah. So.
At that rate, I might move in tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, so childcare, um, I did exactly what they told me to do. I turned the thing into an action, so let's go there. I'll show you that. Let's run another time here.
Just gonna say we're past nine.
Yeah, we're past nine. We're gonna try to get through this one most. And um, childcare.
Puddle of uh.
Yeah, childcare, you put, you put the kids in the house and sell dope out of the kitchen.
Puddle of war, oh, Jesus.
Child care.
It's not funny.
You saw that, didn't you?
Yeah, so this last thing, I just added to, added as an action. We read it as an action. That's all I did.
Okay. Yep.
It used to say, you know, we should do it and then it did, he said, just make it an action. So, okay. Resilience, I got a clarification on this today. Um, we needed to do, to reference fluvial hazard areas.
Eighty-one.
And. And I added one sentence and I think that gets us off the hook. Right there. Look at that weird block. What is, what is that thing?
That's when you've used a PDF and copied and pasted.
Oh, John.
Usually.
Weird, okay.
Did you cite that?
Yeah, like the F. Okay, I'll have to check on that. Okay. Oh, I'm reading this thing again.
Trying to steal my notes?
Yep.
It doesn't show up like that in mine though.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Alright, that seemed fine to you?
Thank you.
About as easy as it can be to get off the hook on that one. And um, the land use map, he didn't see that we had recreation and open space and we have our own recreation map, which shows open space, so we're we're good on that. And regional coordination, I added the one sentence he in addition to the Rutland region as a whole. What else is that? Well, in addition to the greater Rutland, I guess that's this part we added. So, that that solves his. That's it. So. Economic development and housing.
The next sentence is a review of new and existing development in nearby towns. So, the review shall consider the effect it has on the rural quality in Mount Holly. The development shall cause no undue increase. We can't control what happens to the development in other towns.
Yes, you can.
But you can, you can uh, bring it up in there when they have their town plans and you can.
So, part of Act two fifty, especially now, it was, this was strengthened in the recent um, I can't remember what act it was.
Forty-seven.
It was a forty-seven, it could be forty-seven. Um, is the regional coordination piece is stronger in the Act two fifty review. So, things we put in this are taken into consideration for Act two fifty review in other towns.
Okay.
And that makes sense. So, like if things are across the border, you know. Um, alright, so that's what we got so far. And um, so I think we're looking at another draft at our working meeting. Economic development, housing and the crosshairs. So, um, David had a couple of things we could go through real quick if you agree. And then we can get those in the draft as well. Page fifty-four. Oh, these are all on page fifty-four, okay. That's cool. Oh, it may not be fifty-four any longer. Um, Rainbow Riding, it says, I would think it is located near.
Near the village of, in the village.
Okay, Rainbow Riding. Located in the village of Belmont. Okay, that's fair. We wanna call it near the village, right? You good with that? Post offices. Rural delivery routes are also serving Mount Holly residents from the East Wald from Cunninghamville offices. Okay. Alright, where's post offices? I think we could just add that sentence. Is that reasonable?
Sure.
Rural delivery routes.
Yeah. Cemeteries. The Packers Cemetery was turned over to the town sixteen months ago.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, cause it's called an organized cemetery, so we'll add that to the list of town cemeteries.
Town maintained cemeteries.
That one's up. I got that list from Dennis, so.
Really?
Yeah.
He messed up. Cause he's the one who wanted to take it over.
Page fifty-five, dam replacement may have been twenty fifteen, not twenty sixteen.
What? The dam replacement?
Yeah.
Which year was it?
It's the minute.
Where is that? It's supposed to be on the same page, but. Oh, must be.
Well, wait a minute.
Here, replacing in twenty sixteen, so you say it's twenty fifteen.
He wasn't completely sure, but.
Tell you what, if David gives you a date, you wanna check it.
And I already changed, so he he correctly identified the price increase on trash stickers and actually I got that note already from my mom. And actually, I got that note already from my mom. She said, didn't it increase? I said, you're right.
Um, and.
No mention of chit chat.
He raised that. The newsflash is mentioned, but not the chit chat.
Oh, that's surprising. The chit chat's not mentioned? That was certainly unintentional.
It should be mentioned.
Oh, I guess maybe it isn't. Okay, that should go into.
Next to the newsflash, if that's.
Yeah, wherever newsflash is. Okay. Yep, all right, good. Good for everybody else, all of those? Anything else? Anybody's got?
Did you get the one that I sent this morning?
Yeah, I don't agree with that, and I'll tell you why.
Why?
Because it says that forests can't be increased, but it says the. Um, let's find the exact text and I'll tell you. I'll show you. But we're talking about the acreage, the amount of.
It's um.
Remind me where, which chapter is? It was um.
There are so many.
We probably can look up um. Increased, right, or something like that.
It's page thirty.
Is it? Okay.
Section B, future land use.
Measurably, something there.
The paragraph starting townwide surveys.
Townwide surveys. Oh, so there's multiple paragraphs starting townwide surveys?
Townwide surveys spanning decades have found overwhelming consensus among residents. That's the sentence.
Right after future land use with header.
Well, what I was.
That wasn't the comment.
My comment was on the second paragraph there.
Oh, okay.
The challenge for the future is how to measurably increase the amount of housing and commerce, as well as forest fields and other natural areas.
To measurably increase the amount of. So probably the phrase, the part of the phrase that's tricking us is as well as. Maybe we should just say. And.
Well, we don't wanna measure, we can't.
We can. That's exactly what it's meant. So what 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 the what? So every, everything really, the template ideally is um, something that can be measured. So you do want to be able to measure the amount of forests that are protected and you, they should be going. Statute suggests, or even demands that they should be going in a positive direction. You should be increasing the amount of protected forests and not decreasing.
It doesn't say protected forests. It says it challenges how to measurably increase the amount of housing and commerce. And then if you read it again, how to measurably increase forest fields and other natural areas. If you, if you're developing stuff, then you're taking it out of forest fields and natural areas.
That's, so that's what it's suggesting is that that is, those are not mutually exclusive and that there is, it is not zero sum.
But there is only a specific amount of land. You can't expand the amount of land.
No, but you can increase the amount of housing and commerce and still increase the amount of forests. And that is by better use of the land.
What are you saying? The land is used as now if it's not forest fields or other natural?
Most of our space that is not in forest is essentially very poorly utilized. So infill housing, density, there's, there's a number of different techniques.
Doesn't just say forest. It says forest fields.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, correct.
I disagree.
You do, you, so you, so you don't think that it's possible to do both?
I don't think you can be increasing housing and also increase the amount of. Lands that you are protecting, the amount of open space you have.
Then that's, that's the, really the. What we're asked to do, right? You don't wanna have to trade those.
But I think, isn't that why you say protect them?
Where?
That's the proposal.
Protect what?
Forest fields and other natural areas.
Right, you definitely don't wanna regress, but you want to be ideally measurably increasing them over time.
So why not say uh. A challenge for the future is how to measurably increase the amount of housing and commerce, as well as protect and ideally increase.
That's fine. Either main, certainly maintain and ideally increase. That's the, that's the essence.
It doesn't say protected forest fields and other natural areas. It just says to increase the amount of them, and that's my complaint. That you can't add land.
No, you can't forest. So those are, those are not, those are uses of the land. Those are all in that sentence, they're all uses of the land, how many housing, commerce, forest, fields and natural areas. Those are all like the uses of the land, if you think that way.
Whatever.
You're saying that we can't make more land?
Yes.
What John is saying is that we can increase the amount of acres of it that's forested.
But it's not just forested here. He's saying forested fields and natural areas. If it was just forest, that's one thing, but you can't do everything.
You mean like, so like, for instance, when you guys bought, or the. On the conservation committee that bought that house lot up there, right?
Mm hmm.
They took the house down. So what did they make? Made more forest. There was more.
We protected a forest that was there.
Okay, and with taking the house down, did you make more, like a field or open space?
Yeah. We protected what was there. We didn't add.
We did.
You did add in a way because now nobody, somebody can't go.
We took a house down, so we reduced the housing.
So i- in our future land use map.
My point is there's a trade.
There's, there's not. There's definitely not. So like, you, I, that's a core, that's a core outcome after the trade. So you want to be able to increase your housing and increase these. Um, forests and ideally agriculture or other land uses that are, that would be beneficial. I'll give you an example. We took down one home that was occupied very infrequently and for only seasonal use. Added a lot of forest and field for public use. And gave someone the opportunity to build their own home and be a full-time resident. That increased full-time housing and increased open space and forest areas.
So you're talking about reducing second homes, then?
No, that's one. So there's many different ways to increase the amount of housing and commerce. We could, I mean, I don't, this, this is like, I could give you like spitball some other ways to do it, but. Um. Should we, is there a better way to write this? Do you understand what I'm saying?
That's my point, is the way it's written.
rewrite the sentence that makes it more clear.
The way it's written is my concern. So we don't have to do it tonight.
The limit, you know, another example, there are, there are towns that have um, just as much forest fields and other natural areas. As we do and more housing opportunities. Do, can you agree to that?
Well, yeah, I guess probably got a bigger acreage to begin with.
Not necessarily. We, we actually are pretty big.
Protected in front of forest fields and other natural resources.
That's what I suggested.
Yeah, so that's, so that's not this, what the sentence is trying to convey. So like, when you look at our future land use map. And you look at, you know, compare it to what we have, you know, ten years from now, you would ideally like to see more housing. And more forest.
If, if you're trying to say that, then perhaps you have to say a challenge for the future is how to measurably increase both the amount of housing and commerce. Comma, as well as protect and ideally increase forest fields and other natural resources.
That's what, that's what it's trying to say. Whether you agree with that is another statement, but that's what it, yes. So the word both and to.
Protect.
Protect. Protect and ideally increase.
Well, the word protect is, is challenging, right? Cuz it really does mean something to sort of maintain and increase, maintain or increase.
Uh, okay, yeah.
Protect means some status change.
Yeah, yeah.
What you were really looking at is calculate the amount of forest land now and in the future, and you'd like to see it go up.
Okay. That, that language changes.
Okay. So the challenge for the future is how to, say that again, face please.
Challenge for the future is how to measurably increase both the amount of housing and commerce, comma.
Measurably, yep.
As well as.
Both.
To maintain and ideally increase forest fields and other natural.
Okay, to maintain and increase. To repeat, repeat measurably increase, maintain. Okay, that works for me. It work for everybody else? Sounds good to me. Okay.
I don't know, well, never mind. I gotta. I don't know how you can um. Carefully manage to increase second home development, which is the next sentence. With no zoning. But we're not gonna solve that in a plan, so.
So it, it, it doesn't necessarily mean, i- it, it doesn't necessarily need to um, follow. That it will never be zoning.
Well.
If it turns out that the town decides that in order to achieve its goals, it needs zoning ten years from now, that, that's so good.
Well, okay, but this is the plan for the next.
Ten years? Well, you know, anyway, so. The, this current state of the bylaws and whatnot, I mean, it's, those things do change. Um, I don't anticipate it changing, but it could. All it takes is, when I was talking to, like I told you, the planning commission chair in Ludlow, and they're like, how are you guys not? I said, well, we've decided full times not to. How do you not have zoning? She said. Said, well, she says, guess what? You're only one really bad out come away from it. I said, well, maybe all it's gonna take is something to really rail people up and they'll say, how come we have no control of anything? And then it'll probably happen, but it's not gonna be from us pushing for it. So it'll be something that the town people just decide that they need and then it'll happen. That's the way it's happened everywhere else, so. If it turns out that second home development makes it so that literally nobody can afford to live here anymore, then things might change. Who knows?
Hasn't changed in Ludlow. Nobody can afford to live there.
And they have zoning.
And they have zoning, yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, so. Where are we? So we're trying to get another draft for the working meeting.
Past Andrew, that time is where we are.
Yeah, I know. Well.
The next working meeting is October the fourth.
Yeah.
And the next regular is?
The eighteenth.
So assuming we can pin it down on the fourth. I think the earliest opportunity we could do a hearing is. In early November, no.
I tried to work out the. Um. Yeah, if, if you pin it down on October the fourth, then. I think that. Actually, no, doesn't even fit. It's, it's already slipped further than I thought it would.
Yeah, we're looking at like the, probably like eighth of November.
Uh, I don't. I'm not sure that it could be that, cuz the thing is, it has to be thirty days after that. Because you have to send the copies, the hard copies, so.
Well, you know, they don't have to be hard copies. They can be electronic, but if they don't receive the electronic, that has to be hard.
But the, the earliest you could do it, I think, is the twentieth of November.
No, I could, I could send an email the night of the four.
Yeah, but there's thirty days. You, you could, you can only have the hearing thirty days after that.
Yeah. So why would that be the twentieth of November? It's a month. All I need is a month, right?
Yeah, but when, when does our hearing fall, like our?
I'm not looking.
Yeah, well, it's the dates that they're posted in the papers and.
Oh, we, we only need fifteen days for that.
But yeah, the thirty days is the issue.
Right. So my, my thinking is that it can be from, you know, roughly the eight.
Can I move to a turn?
Yeah.
We did.
We can send the next meeting.
Does that make sense?
It does. For some reason, I had got all of this incorrectly in my head.
Okay, so let's now try to shoot for, should we? Just try to put it on the same day as our regular meeting in November? As a goal? Six o'clock, ahead of the seven o'clock meeting.
Oh, after November, of the November regular meeting. Yeah, which would be the twenty.
Fifteenth.
Uh. The third, is that the third?
Yep.
That'd be the seventeenth.
It's unusual.
Two, oh yeah, it's a short.
The first is on a Wednesday.
Oh.
Yeah.
So we have.
November the fifteenth.
And then we can squeak it in before Thanksgiving. And then.
First, the eighth, the fifteenth. The twenty-second, and the twenty-ninth.
The eighth could work, but.
The eighth of November.
Yeah, which days are, we just have to be special meeting. The first, right?
First.
It, well, if, we probably wouldn't have one ideally in November, but.
Okay.
So an election on the seventh?
Oh. Yeah, I guess so, probably. I don't know, who's, what's, what is the election this year?
I don't know if there is one.
Am I up for that?
Is it my own?
No, real election, like election day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then also there's any.
So, okay, so is the aim to have the public hearing on the fifteenth of November?
Yeah.
At six PM?
According to Reebrook, yes.
Well, so there is, there is a detail there. This select board meeting would be the fourteenth?
Yep.
So there's two commissioners up for reappointment.
Oh.
Hmm?
Who?
You and Andy.
Oh, and Andy?
Yeah.
So.
No reason.
You still go through.
Theoretically.
You go through the hearing with new commissioners potentially? Well, but the thing is already.
All I know is when I applied, there was just a stupendous amount of people that applied.
You noticed that?
You had one option, you were stuck with me.
You, you noticed that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I would say that is not a big concern.
Yeah, well.
But there may be other applicants.
All right, so let's, let's figure that one out at our next meeting. Um. You all done?
Yes.
All right. Meeting adjourned nine thirty-one.